Today is March 7th and the Board of Commissioners Workshop Agenda -- Board of Agenda -- Board of Commissioners meeting is called to order. Will Commissioner Lister please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will lead you in a prayer and the President leads you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Please join me for a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we are gathered before you in fellowship with our friends and neighbors as an act of stewardship. Our stewardship is toward the nation that was born of the recognition of you as the source of its inalienable rights, not mankind or the government it creates, and that therefore government should be our servant and not our master. To this day, our government recognizes you in its pledges, its songs, and its monuments, and even its currency. May it ever be so. In this we pray, amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the City Clerk please call to roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Oakley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Present.
Mayor Black?
Here. Next, we have approval of the minutes. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we do this in two separate votes. The one from April 18th through February 13th, when all five of us were here, vote on that, versus the ones from August 9th through March 7th of 2017, vote on that separately.
I second that. All right, that's from April 18th, 2017, to February 13th, 2018, and then August 9th to March 7th.
Correct.
2017, okay.
Madam Mayor, before we go any further, I'd like to ask the City Clerk, if it'd be all right, if we go ahead and correct the spelling of a person's name?
Yes.
It's Stephen Kocik. And that was K-O-C-H-I-C-K. Is that right? Okay, yes, that's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I can have a motion then to approve from August 9th, 2016, to March 7th, 2017.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for March 9th through 16th to 17th.
That motion's been made. John, you made the motion, didn't you?
I made the motion that we split it.
Is that not the motion on the table?
Say it again, please.
Is that not the motion on the table? Don't we need to vote on that motion?
Yeah, we need to vote on that motion before we go to approving a motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, do we have a second for that motion then?
Yes, we already have a second.
Okay. All right, any comments from the staff or commission?
Just a question on the actual minutes that were given to us. My last Florida League of Cities meeting, the person said that we only had to do agenda items that were actionable and voted on, and we didn't have to do a verbatim. Did we pay somebody to do the verbatim of these minutes?
That was a consultant. When I come in, there was a lot of minutes that had not been done.
Right, but again, it's just actionable items and votes. It doesn't have to be verbatim. I don't understand why we're doing verbatim. Is there a reason we're doing verbatim?
Those were how the consultant did it and sent it to us.
It had to be more money. I don't understand that, though. I'm just asking, are we going to continue to do it this way?
We can just do summaries, yes, sir.
Are you guys okay with just summaries? Okay, let's just do summaries. It should be a lot easier on everybody.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any more comments?
I had a couple. I think the clerk was listed wrong on February 2nd, 2017, and March 7th, 2017.
Yes, and I went back and I listened to the live stream on there, and it was a interim city clerk. I believe it was Cheryl.
So they were wrong, okay.
That will be corrected, yes, ma'am.
Any more comments?
Madam City Clerk, could you repeat the motion because I'm still sort of confused?
Okay, for my understanding, this motion is for the August 9th, 2016, minutes through March 7th, 2017.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? City Clerk, will you please call to roll?
Yes. Commissioner Oakley?
We're just in the first set, right?
Yes.
Just saying that we're going to do it separately.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
I'm confused. We're voting on doing them separately.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. So now we will approve the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the first set of minutes from August 9th, 2016, to March 7th, 2017? No motion?
I can't do it, I wasn't there.
No motion? All right, then we'll go on to the second set of minutes, April 18th, 2017, to February 13th, 2018.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from April 18th, 2017, to February 13th, 2018.
A second.
All right, any comments from the commission or staff? City Clerk, will you please call to roll?
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval.
Madam Mayor, I just want to ask the city attorney for record, you know, for those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, so that we didn't even vote one, this city attorney, what happens to those meetings or those agendas not being approved?
Well, first of all, minutes are required to be taken by the Sunshine Law, but they're not required that you have approved minutes. So these meetings will be put in as taken, recorded, but not approved. The other ones that you did approve will show up as approved. It probably has little difference, but if you're in a court of law or something and you have approved minutes, that shows that you've reviewed them and you approved them. If they're not approved, then they simply haven't been approved by the city commission.
Okay, so it really doesn't affect it too much then, if I'm understanding you correctly. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Most of our meetings are taped, and there's audio and video, and if verbatim transcripts were needed, they could be obtained.
Thank you.
But again, they're not required to be verbatim minutes. They can be short form minutes.
Okay, and do we have an approval, I mean, a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I saw a move, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Any comments from commission or staff? Will the City Clerk please call to roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
And next, we have a presentation and certificate of completion to be awarded to Mayor Black, Vice Mayor Dowther, Commissioner Oakley for completion of the 2018 Institute for Elected Municipal Officials held January 19th through the 21st in Altamont Springs, Florida.
Madam Mayor, if I can make the presentation from the podium? I just wanted to read just a little section here from the letter from the Florida League of Cities, and it says, "On behalf of the John Scott Daley Florida Institute of Government and Florida League of Cities, I am pleased to award the certificate of completion for eight hours of instruction at the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials in Altamont Springs, Florida, on January 19th to January 21st, 2018. For those of you that are not familiar with the Florida League of Cities and specifically the Institute for Elected Officials, the training that the elected officials go through is pretty comprehensive. It talks about Sunshine Law, it talks about ethics, it talks about budgeting, governance, all those different aspects. It's not a requirement that any elected official go through such a program, so it is commendable that your elected officials took the time and effort to spend the hours in such a program. So it is an honor to recognize them for their certifications from the Florida League of Cities, and there is an advanced class. Obviously, they had mentioned that you're more than welcome to attend that, and that's more of a boot camp as well, but I do want to take this time to give our elected officials a round of applause for taking the time to voluntarily participate in a program that certainly benefits the residents, staff, and their constituents by taking the extra step to make sure that they are prepared and equipped to govern."
We have no items on the dialog, so now we will have public comment. And I just want to remind everybody to please speak clearly and precisely into the microphone. The microphone is turned on, do not try to turn it off, then everyone, it'll be working just fine. And remember to state your name and address, and please be civil. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madera Beach. One of the things at the last Commissioners' meeting that caught my ear quite a bit is one of the Commissioners, Ms. Oakley, stated that about environmentally concerned about our waters and what have you, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. One of the things that was budgeted this year was for a pump-out boat so that we could remove some of the waste that is being dumped into our waters. I have children, grandchildren, that play in the bay. Anything that we can do to prevent or to voluntarily help people discharge their waste in a manner that is safe for all people that enjoy our waters. So I would really appreciate if you would revisit that pump-out boat. Also, one of the other issues is that if you look at our signs throughout our waters, they're sun-washed, and those signs are responsible of the city of Madera Beach to put those signs back up or to make them visible to our boaters. And at this point in time, there's a lot of them that are basically unreadable, and people are traveling way, way too fast in a lot of the areas that we try to protect our manatees. So the pump-out boat is a good idea. It can be used, multiple uses, for maintenance of our signs, even probably in the marina as well, and to enlist people to pump out their waste instead of dumping it in our waters where we catch fish and our children play, and everybody play, put it that way. So I would like you to consider that, please. Thank you very much.
Hi. Hi, Debbie Weinstein, 441 129th Avenue. I'd like to address two items that are not on the budget, and the first one is the citywide bulletin boards located at the library, Winn-Dixie, and in John's Pass Village. They've only recently been used again after a five-year abandonment, but, and they started off okay a few months ago, but there is only sporadic information posted. For example, nothing was posted on any of the three boards with regards to the candidate forum for the citywide election, March 13th, and nothing was posted on any of the three boards with regards to the garage sale last weekend. I think that the means of communication on these three boards are really important to a lot of our residents who don't always check next door Madera or the citywide website or Facebook. I think it's even on Facebook, I don't know. So I would just like the commission to be sure that the upcoming events, as well as all meetings, are posted on these boards. I think it's really important. And the second item that I'd like to address is the ballfields, because we've been having lots of activity on our ballfields, which is a great thing, but there have been a lot of figures bandied about with regards to revenue and expenditures on these ballparks. So I looked at my budget book, my adopted operating and budget book, and realized that it is a great thing that in the 2008, '17, '18 budget, we have said that we're going to get in $328,000 worth of revenue, but the expenses, according to the budget book, show $863,200 in deficits, okay, or in total expenditures, I'm sorry, which means that we still have, no matter how you look at it, a $535,000 deficit. A lot of people say that recreation departments never make any money, but I think a $594,000 deficit must be addressed carefully. So you might also say, "Well, Debbie, the 2018 year isn't over, so the figures might be corrected at the end of 2018, so I went back to the previous year." And I realized that the revenue for the previous year was $269,500, and this is a finalized figure, and the expenses were $863,580 of expenses. Still, a tremendous deficit, almost $600,000, and that's a final figure. Either we're doing something wrong, or the figures are just not showing how they need to be, but I think that we really need to look at it again. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Bill Gay, 423 150th Avenue, Madera Beach. During the January and February BOC meetings, I raised questions about the release of the ethics complaints that were lodged against several city officials, and I'd also requested those ethics complaints be posted on the city's website. To my knowledge, none of this has been accomplished at this point, and I'm wondering, you know, where that might be in the process. Those documents were supposed to be turned over by the city attorney to the city back in May of last year. I think there were probably two sets of documents, perhaps, I'm not sure. One would be letters notifying the persons who were complained against, that would be Crawford, Shantz, DeSantis, that they were the subject of ethics investigations. Those were the letters that came from the ethics commissions to them. Another part of those documents could be the actual complaints themselves. So I don't know what was in Trask's file, whether Trask's file's been turned over to the city or not, but I would expect those documents were part of the Sunshine Act lawsuit against the city, which was settled for somewhere around, oh, probably cost the city close to a quarter of a million dollars to settle those lawsuits. I would expect that these documents should be posted and should be available to the public. I also wanted to talk very briefly about the other part of the Sunshine Act, and that was the appointment of Hushkovay to the city commission. Judge Day ruled in his court decision that based on the undisputed facts of the case, the court concludes that Crawford engineered, implemented the process, Trask blessed the process, Palladino, Hodges, and Lister, in voting for the appointment, violated the Sunshine Act. In violating the Sunshine Act, they not only violated the state law, but they also violated their oath of office to uphold the ordinances Madera Beach and of the state of Florida, and possibly could be removed from the city commission. They're also subject to a misdemeanor violation for violating the Sunshine Act, and there may be follow-up coming forward on that. Thank you very much.
Reese Noran, 363 Medallion Boulevard, right here across the street where that pipe is going in, the pipe. I wasn't going to speak, but since Debbie did, I would like to emphasize her first point, those places where the information sheet is supposed to go up can use some improvement, so that should be a pretty easy thing to do. The other one was on the athletic department. The athletic department, as far as all the places that I have ever lived, is not a profit center. It's what we pay our taxes for. So while it may be looked at as a deficit because it costs more than we bring in on income, I don't look at it as a bad thing. I think the events that have gone on over there have been very well managed and handled. I like the Ferris wheel 40 feet from my front door, I don't have any problem with it, I don't have any problem with the games or the other activities. The last point that was mentioned by Mr. Gay, I am a little more familiar than the average bear with what went on there, and what's not mentioned is prior to them taking their votes and violating the Sunshine Law, that was a practice that had been done here for years in order to keep the candidates that were not voted in from coming up and not knowing whether they're going to be or not. So it was sort of a courtesy thing. They still violated the regulation, as I understand it, but it was not with malice, and it was not intentional. It was simply to let the winner know that he was selected, and those who weren't were not selected. Thank you.
Yes.
Stephen Miller, 15329 Harbor Drive, Madera Beach. I wasn't going to get up and talk, but some of these comments were very interesting. I'd like to commend Mr. Preston for talking about the problems we have with our waterways. I think it's very true. I think we really should be looking at something we could do about all these boats that are vagrant boats, really, that are sitting and using Madera Beach as a harbor agent, as a cheap place to keep their boats. And I know we've got state laws that are involved in this, but as a city, we should be dealing with the state and trying to turn this around so we get some more control over what's going on with the boats out there. I mean, most other cities have done something to get rid of those boats, or at least I think if you went down to Riviera Beach, you wouldn't just park your boat, you know, anywhere you wanted to and leave it there forever, all right? I'm sure you can't do that in Fort Lauderdale. I doubt you can do it in Miami, but apparently in Madera Beach, you can do it. Well, that's one topic, but I did commend him on that. As far as the rec department being, they all lose money. Well, they, not all of them lose money, and our rec department is based on a faulty business model. Most places that run rec departments have a big group of citizens that want to use those facilities, and they basically have a large group of residents of the city that use those facilities, and they only have like incidental usage by external people. If you go to St. Pete or to Clearwater, that's what you find. The people that use the facilities are residents of St. Pete, residents of Clearwater. Here, most of the time, I've got the feeling that most of the people that use these facilities do not live in Clearwater, or do not live in Madera Beach. I would like to get an audit of who uses these facilities under each of these programs, the children, even the children's program. Are they children of Madera Beach, or are they children in other places? Who plays at the baseball field? Are they residents of Madera Beach or the residents of Seminole? You know, it's something we should do, examine the business model. The third thing was, I was very disappointed in the candidate forum. It was advertised that you would come, you know, we would come to the candidate forum, citizens would be able to ask questions and get some answers. No, this was not possible. It was totally vetted by the Chamber of Commerce. Only questions they wanted to ask were asked, there was no back and forth. There should be someplace where we can come and talk to you as our elected officials and talk as a group, like a town hall, and get some answers, and have a commentary back and forth, rather than this, you know, we sit here, no answers. I think that just about does. Oh, the beach parking. I did go get an overpriced beer at the snack shack the other night and sat there, and although it's very pleasant, I mean, it's just over, it is highly priced, and that's probably one reason I don't go there. And I noticed some people using the parking meters, they were totally dumbfounded. I mean, that's still an ongoing problem.
Steve Kocik, 15301, Second Street East, Madera Beach. We have a lot of issues that we keep going back to, one with that voting. The city attorney, city clerk ran the election, they make a mistake, and the commissioners are getting blamed for it. We've done it before, yes, we have. What happens is the clerk gives out the things, you vote right then and there, and then the person's picked. But it's the responsibility of the city attorney and the city clerk who ran it. And I thought Sunshine violations go to the state attorney general. If you send it up to there, he investigates. A number of years ago, we had the, a complaint was put in, the city, state attorney general called up Pinellas County detectives, came down, detectives interviewed everybody, there was a Sunshine violation that they thought was being done. After the detectives did his investigation, he sent it back to the attorney general, and there was no Sunshine violation. So go into courts and all, yeah, you can say whatever you want, but unless it comes from the state attorney general, I don't see anything going on with these things, just except tomorrow, the commissioners. The other thing is with the recreation field, part of those are expenses whether it gets used or not. There is maintenance cost to it, there are things to it. Are we a society, or are we just a little group of people here in Madera Beach who care nothing about anybody else? If we have Little League things, or we have softball tournaments, or we have whatever going on, isn't that what a community does? It shares with each other? Or is it just, "Put the wall up, maybe we should build a wall. Let's build a wall, and we only let you in if you're here." So far, mosquitoes can't come across the bridge, that's why we have none, so now maybe we can stop people. That was a joke. But constantly, we have talked that is so anti-people, it's just so greedy, and like every penny can be a conundrum. I have, through the years, heard nothing from these people how to increase revenue besides saying, "Cut and slash." There's nothing positive coming out of these people. And yet, we listen to them time and time again, and they give nothing to the community but scorn. How about we start looking at ways of increasing revenue, having people come, having people do things? So what, that they don't live here? They live in America. And I think that should be the bottom line. If you're an American, come here, please, and enjoy Madera Beach. Thank you.
Anyone else? Am I missing any hands? I often miss a hand or two. All right, public comment is now closed. We have nothing on the considered agenda or anything under unfinished business, so the next item is contracts and agreements, and that's an approval of a contract with Ajax Paving Industries of Florida, resurfacing of Gulf Boulevard from 131st Avenue to 150th. Director Marschino?
Yes, ma'am. This is the DOT project, which is a lap project, pass-through project, being funded by the department and managed by the city of Madeira Beach. As soon as we have the approval on this, we'll meet with Mr. Evans' office, and we've already talked to staff with ways, better ways, to communicate how we're getting information out about the different projects, but that's what this is. Repaving of Gulf Boulevard.
Any discussion from the board?
I think we've pretty much gone through it all. We talked about it.
Floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed for public comment. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that this commission pass the contract approval with Ajax Paving Industries of Florida LLC to resurface Gulf Boulevard from 131st to 150th.
Any more discussion from staff or commission? City clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doutier?
Yes.
Mayor Blake?
Yes.
Next under new business, we have ordinance 2018-02, offense ordinance modification, first reading. Director Hotel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you give me one moment to get this presentation up. There we go, very first shot. To begin with, I'm going to address, this is, this is an amendment, or several amendments, actually, to deal with some issues we've had with administration of the fence code and changes of interpretation to meet the exact letter of the law, which have also changed the way the fence code is being administered on the ground throughout the community. The first thing I wanted to talk about were the, maybe the simpler ones. Can't hear? Okay. I'm going to start out with probably the simpler issues. To begin with, the amendment does address fencing and where residential uses and parking lots, especially, for instance, the county park, we have residential lots that are right next to some of our parks. And we get people coming from those parking lots and from the parks, climbing over people's smaller fences, and they're tearing up the sand dunes that are around those yards and just generally creating a nuisance for those residents. Now, the edge properties are always a little more threatened, and wherever you have two, not necessarily incompatible, but challenging uses next to each other, we have to make a point of trying to protect the weaker one. In particular, what we've been doing is people have been coming in asking for variances on their fences. And of course, they usually get a variance, but to ask the community members to come in and request protection from something that's an incompatibility is problematic. The comprehensive plan requires us, of course, to address those issues holistically and to protect neighborhoods and residential neighborhoods in particular. So we're proposing that people in those sensitive situations be allowed to have a six-foot fence along the distance of their property to get rid of some of that impact. It also gets rid of the light pollution they get from cars driving around the parking lots that come through an open fence. The next issue is in regards to commercial fencing. The fencing code deals with rear yards holistically. It talks about all properties with rear yards on water, and it limits their activities pretty severely by not allowing any higher fencing. This is really problematic along the bay, where we have a lot of the fisheries and other more marine industrial-type uses because there's no provision in the code that allows us to put up security fencing. That's a problem not only for their security, but also for public safety. They do get people coming over lower fences into their yards and messing with the equipment and potentially causing not only injury, but fire and other problems. Typically, these situations would be regulated through a site plan process. And so we'd like to refer the fencing code back to the site plan process. We can talk about that in more detail as we go through reviewing the commercial sections of the code, if you'd like, at a later date. But at this point, we would like to allow for the site plan review process to work with the property owners to establish a placement and appropriate height for fences, although we have limited it to a six-foot by keeping it in the language. One thing, more I would like to say about this. The ordinance that you have been provided, I appreciate the clerk's assistance with getting everything to you, but I noticed that when she presented it back to me, I did not notice that some of the underlining came out. And in the first section, dealing with Section 110-447, it was pointed out to me just this evening that the first paragraph under there, dealing with rear yards facing Bocas Yegua Bay, the sentence that begins with additionally and ends with security is the one that deals with the commercial and institutional uses I had just mentioned. That should all have been underlined. It was on this side of the computer, but when it was transmitted, it did not come out as underlined. The commercial areas in that section are addressed in the above, in the title. And we can refer to the city attorney for his opinion on any impact that has on tonight's hearing. But I will go on with the rest of the presentation.
Can we just correct it at second reading?
Okay.
There's a couple other typos I noticed also that'll come out by second reading.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, I want to go more carefully through the sections that's dealing with residential fencing. Back in 1983, when the fencing, the fence code was first adopted, it addressed the rear yards by way of defining them by the setback line. So that if you're, for instance, in R1, your setback is 30 feet from the seawall or the property line, whichever is furthest out. And, well, it's actually just the seawall along the bay. And so you were, what the requirement is that you can have, once you've reached that point, your privacy fence, if you've had it along the side, has to drop from six feet down to three foot solid or four feet open. And then unless you have a sewage lift station, in which case you can encircle it with a six-foot fence. Similarly, on the Gulf of Mexico, you can have a garden wall, a solid fence, or a hedge at three feet from that setback line, or an open fence at four feet. And it also addresses the sewage lift station. The idea is to keep an open view, not only for the people who live in the neighborhood, but also from the water as you go by on the water. You don't necessarily want to be looking up at high walls and fences and things like that. Recently, it was drawn to the city attorney, the staff and the city attorney's attention that it appears in 2006, the code was amended, Section 82-2, to state that rear yards means the open unoccupied space extending across the full width of the lot and measured between the rear lot line and the rear, the wall of the main building. And so if a house is not built all the way up to the setback line, it now has to consider all of that area between the house and the seawall as being rear yard, and so the fence in that area has to drop to a lower level. So before, where people, if the house is set back, they would be able to drop at the 30-foot line, the same as other people who had their houses out there. Now, they would have to have, drop their fence height further back in their yard. So, since that time, we have been telling people, when they come in to repair their fence, they are not going to have to change it because almost all the fences in the city were built to that 30-foot setback line, and that's how I represented it here. Most of them had their fences at six feet, all the way to that, and then it dropped down to the three or four feet after that in this open space, the kind of uniform open space that's created by the 30-foot setback. Now, we're telling them that you can only put the six-foot fence back to this point, even with your house, and then from there on out, you would have to drop. Now, if your house is here, of course, you can have a higher fence. But if your house is back here, you no longer have the right to six-foot privacy to cover this area in front of the house. This affects mostly the older, smaller homes. The newer homes are generally built to the setback line, and so the, over time, that probably would not be as much of an issue. But for people who have been living here long-term, they now no longer are able to kind of capture this portion of their yard with privacy. There's a lot of variation in how that gets applied. For instance, if you have an open porch, but the roof covers it, and it's always been part of the structure, you can put your, you can put your fence out to the edge of that. But if you have an open porch without a roof, then your fence has to be back here. And then it's very important to note that within this area, this is really a building envelope area. And you can build a house, anybody can put their house up there. You can also put your accessory sheds in the rear yard up to that setback area. So the outcome of that is that we've been getting a number of people coming in who no longer can replace the fence, and so instead of putting a six-foot fence, are now erecting an eight-foot shed to get back to the point of privacy in that same area. So it's actually more obstructive when they choose to do that than it, than it used to be. There's several problems with this. As I said, I'm providing you the section dealing with the accessory structures because the question has been raised that how can the sheds go out there if the fences aren't allowed to? Accessory structures are allowed in rear yards at the same setback as the principal structure, as per the code. And so what we've got now is that in that building area, you can no longer have a six-foot fence, but you can have an eight-foot shed, or you can have a 40-foot-high house. So the problem, the problem arises on the ground. It looks something like this. Everybody's six-foot stops at the corner of their house. So these people stops here, these are up here, these are back here. Some people who have corner-facing lots, the corner of their house may go all the way down to the 30-foot. And because they're on the corner and it's turning, they get the benefit of the angle. And so you can see that each property owner has a different right to the use of their property. It happens a lot in areas where there's turns. As you can see in this situation, the primary angle of this lot is along this line here. And so the setback line comes all the way parallel to it, and so the six-foot fence can come all the way down for this property. But for this one that's on angle, is also on this angle, it would have to stay back here. And then there are areas like this one, when the setback for the fence or the height of the fence is tied only to the rear yard, and the rear yard is defined by the building. If the building is non-conforming, as in the case of this house, where it's only 16 feet off of the wall, then the fence can go all the way down to the building line. And so they actually have a benefit, additional benefit, for being non-conforming. You wouldn't think this would come up very much, except that we do have the redevelopment plan in place that allows people to tear down an existing house and build back on the same non-conforming footprints as long as they now meet FEMA standards. Here's some other situations where there's extreme differences. For instance, on these very wedged lots where the houses are forced to the back in order to get side setbacks, this person's fence would have to stop, drop back here. If you look carefully, you can see they already have a six-foot fence here now to the 30-foot line. They would not be able to put that back under the current interpretation of the code and use of the code. And then it's, it's different all the way around. So the result of the new interpretation is that hundreds of lots are now defined as non-conforming. The use of the code is written, it creates an inconsistency in that exercise of the code is more highly regulates fences than it regulates sheds or even houses. It has the effect of reducing openness because some of the homeowners have been coming in and putting up sheds instead of their six-foot fence now. So they're putting up a four-foot fence and then putting an eight-foot shed in the place where they used to have. And they can have more than one shed. They can have a shed in places where they used to have the six-foot fence, thereby trying to regain what they thought was their right to privacy. The current code language also creates inequality among neighbors. The older, lower-cost and smaller homes are the ones that generally are further back and have thereby less use of their lot or less privacy. The right to view across a neighbor's property cannot be ensured for the permitted building envelope. And I know that's a big concern that people have. They want to be able to look across their neighbor's yard. But that's an area in which they have a complete right to build their home. And so you can't ensure them in any way that that, that will remain open. And this just to give you, everybody's seen different kinds of fences and the heights of the houses. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Staff recommends that we go back to the interpretation that allows for the use of the setback line as the spot at which the fence is lowering in height in order to accomplish or avoid all of the points that were made and also to avoid everything being non-conforming. Plan Board recommended the same.
So Linda, land out for me. We're changing the 30-foot setback? The 30-foot setback stays in place?
The 30-foot setback stays in place.
It's never going to change.
Correct. All we're doing is suggesting that your six-foot privacy fence stops there instead of back at the wall of your house if your house happens to be further away from the seawall.
Not conforming house or not conforming lot, whatever. But everybody gets 30-foot?
Everybody gets the same amount, yes.
That pretty much standardizes fences, is what you're saying?
Exactly, yes.
Right now, with all of these different-sized lots, some people like to go back 50 feet, then drop it to four foot. So this standardizes everything across the board. Everybody's on the same page. Doesn't matter what size of the lot.
Correct.
Really?
That's correct.
You're talking about from the seawall, right?
That's right.
Okay. Just the rear lots? Just the rear side of the house?
Just the rear side of the house, yes.
All right. I, thank you.
Terry, did you get this email from Dick Lewis?
I did. I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah. This, this is kind of what it's doing, what it will do. Did you see that?
Mm-hmm.
Nancy?
Because that's 30 feet. That's, he's got 30 feet. So this is a conforming.
It is. Well, they, the city had them take that down, that one section.
This was the fence that was put up that triggered the interpretation because the property neighbor next to that fence didn't want that last panel going up. It goes just to the 30-feet setback. And he said, he wanted it to be. Correct. Right, right now, we had to make them take that down, yes. And so that's not even there right now. They took it down because the interpretation of the way the code reads right now, you have to use the back wall of the house.
So he's either going to put this panel back up or put a shed up there?
One or the other. One or the other.
I'm, I'm, I'm not. How many sheds have been put up? Did you know, personally?
I have had, within, probably just since December, we've had four different families come in and put up sheds.
Because that's a legal way to put up a fence, without putting up a fence. I mean, I would, that's a loophole in the law, I mean.
Several people have stated they wanted to replace their fences and repair them because of wind damage, but have decided not to, because, in hopes that this gets resolved.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm certainly open for more information. I know that there's going to be some, people coming forward and speak, so I'm looking forward to that. But I, I think 30-foot for everybody is, is the way to go, you know? Everybody should be the same. But that's just me, right now. Give me about 10 minutes, I may change my mind.
Linda, you said that they can put in two sheds in the backyard?
You can have more than one accessory use, yes.
Side by side, or from one side of the yard to the other side?
It can be side by side, if, if there's space between the house or along the house and the, between there and the setback line, yes.
So, you could put six sheds there?
Well, I hadn't seen anybody try that.
Maybe I shouldn't have said anything.
Don't suggest that. They may have other types of accessories, though, as well. People put tiki bars and other things up, they have to meet the same height, but it just says accessories.
Okay. All right, any more discussion from the commission? Floor is now open for public comment on this agenda item. Yes, sir.
Dick Lewis, 561 Crystal Drive. As you know, I submitted extensive comments to you by email, so this will be brief. My comments address residential waterfront properties only. The stated purpose of the proposed code change is given as establishing uniformity in the installation of six-foot-high fences in rear yards to the 30-foot setback location on waterfront properties. This would seem desirable if all structures were uniformly set back. Then again, under these circumstances, the code change would be unnecessary. You wouldn't even be discussing it. The reality is that the predominance of waterfront structures are not uniformly set back, with relatively few constructed to the code limit of 30 feet. As a result, this change provides no benefit to property owners and would undoubtedly adversely affect many. I encourage you not to adopt this change. It's unnecessary and detrimental in most respects. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Black, and commission members. My name is Thomas Fessenden. My address is 8801 98th Street. That's in Seminole, Florida. However, I'm here tonight as a public policy administration student at St. Petersburg College, currently finishing up a degree. And as a government student, currently in Professor Cronchinnable, Jeff Cronchinnable's policy leadership class, I'm here to present on the first reading agenda item, which is ordinance 2018-02 for the City of Madeira Beach. That addresses fence height in rear yards facing Pocasiga Bay and the Gulf of Mexico. This is, of course, to be, for me, presented as a case study on this issue in my public policy class. So, I'd like to start by saying, like many of us, I'm not originally from Florida, but a lot of us had moved down, and when I was moved down very young, it was because it was my folks considered to be a better way of life, better climate, beauty. And I've been here for 35 years now. And although I live just up the street, just a few minutes away, in that 35 years, the Madeira Beach area of Florida has greatly become part of my Florida identity. Many of my friends have attended Madeira Beach Middle. I've personally done a lot of work in this town. I have fished your causeways, voted your intercoastals, and I know business owners here, and friends of mine who are homeowners here as well. So, I've been here a long time, long enough to see the changes. And for better or worse, the world is changing, has changed, and our communities as microcosms have changed as well. There are more people, different technologies, new innovations, and that all contribute to updated challenges. But one thing that has not changed is that we all have to live together. Most of us all have neighbors, and we definitely all have needs. I have a complete copy of the planning and zoning amendment here in front of me. I've reviewed and verified the specifics of the item. And the crux of the meat of the issue is found on page four of the printout here, and I'll just go ahead and read that here for you. The current code language creates, does create an inequality among neighbors. It deprives some of privacy and full use of property. If the setback line is, is set at a standard, which it is, of 30 feet, but if somebody has a, a shorter home, they can't have a six-foot fence from that, from that area, which would mean that they can only have four feet, which there's a, there's a privacy issue, that I think they're entitled to, especially in this, in this day and age. And that's why I was happy to take on this issue. However, if the neighbors were to have a larger house, we know that, that they could have it all the way out to the setback line. So, in the conclusion, my recommendation is to move forward with the agenda item as it is, in the spirit of fairness and privacy, that the proposed amendment is therefore passed and adopted by the commission of the City of Madeira Beach. Thank you very much.
Anyone else care to speak?
Thank you, commissioners. It's Jason Dela Cruz, owner of Don's Dock. I'm the underlying part that she forgot, that got missed. So, I want to thank her for working on that and getting that moved forward, and I hope you guys adopt that. Hopefully, it's just two or three readings, not like 16, and it's not another year before I can get the fence. But I do want to thank you guys taking that into thought, and her working through that and getting that moving forward for us. Thank you.
All right, the floor is now closed for public comment. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2018-02, first reading.
I need to read the title.
Oh, okay.
Of the ordinance. Ordinance 2018-02, and ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Division III Walls, Fences, Hedges, and Sand Fences, Section 110-447A and B, and Section 110-453B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, providing for the height of fencing in rear yards, defining fence types, finding the amendments consistent with the city comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing for the recognition of state permission, and providing for an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass ordinance 2018-02 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more comments from the commissioner's staff?
Only because I think that conformability or, or the 30-foot setback should be throughout the city. I, I have to disagree with you, Dick, and I, I'm sorry. I, I really, no, I like you. But I, I think that's, that's, that's a good thing, that everybody in the city gets the same 30-foot, and, you know, I'm sure going forward, they're going to utilize that 30-foot to the, to the best that they can. But I just think it's great if everybody's on the same page. We've always, as, as a commission set up here, and whatever we pass for, for Madeira Way, we pass for John's Pass. We're, everybody's under the same umbrella here, so to get everybody under that same umbrella is going to be fantastic. We do have a lot of non-conforming lots here. I know Linda's pulling her hair out because of the things that are going on in Madeira Beach, because for many, many years, we just sort of let, well, people build what, what they, what they wanted. And so, to start this is, is a good process, and I agree with it, and the reason I'm going to vote for it is so everybody will be on the same page.
The city clerk, please call the board.
Yes. Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
No. Sorry, no.
Mayor Black?
Next, we have reports and correspondence. Any reports from the city commission?
Oh, I'd like to make a remark. Let's see, we've got the Gulf Beaches Rotary Spring Break Carnival coming on March 15 to the 18th. On March 15th, they'll be open from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00. On the 16th and 17th, it will be noon to 10:00. And then, on the 18th, it's noon to 9:00 p.m. And Mr. Norrin, you will have your Ferris wheel.
Madam Mayor, I just want to find out from the city clerk, maybe, when the planning commissions or, or when they meet, and, because I see that this fence ordinance went in front of the planning commission before, and they, they looked at it, so they, they, I just, I'd like to see their agenda and, and what they come up with before I come up here on the dice and, and get there. I need a list of when the planning commission's going to meet, and.
Actually, I'd like to hear about it in a workshop before it just gets thrown on the agenda.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Put it on a workshop prior to it coming on to the agenda.
Before it goes to the planning commission?
No, no, that's fine. Either way, but, you know, I'd like to hear what the planning board says, too, on it.
Exactly, yeah. I, I need to know when the planning commission meets, that's all I need to know. Give me an update on that.
Sure. They meet on the second Monday of every month at 6:00, and we'll send that out to you, so you know exactly what dates those are.
Fantastic. I know these are new committees, and they just started meeting, but I, I had asked for a schedule before, and I never got one in my box. So, thank you for doing that, Linda.
Madam Mayor, if I may, also, in subsequent agenda items, we will be putting action that is taken by our advisory boards or our planning commission, and the like to make sure that the board sees that in the agenda items. If there was any issues that were articulated in those boards, that that is part of the agenda packet. So, you're also getting the impact, the input and feedback from those groups, as well as staff's recommendation. And also, if there is, the meetings are, meeting minutes are available, that will be attached as part of the exhibit, the agenda item that will come before the board for, for decisions. That's the kind of the new way we're going to be putting together some agenda items.
That'll make it, that'd be very helpful. City, uh, city attorney, do you have any reports or correspondence?
Not at this time.
And city manager, anything else?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. We had an opportunity to meet with representatives from the Rotary Club with respect to the American Flag Disposal Site. The original site that was proffered was, there was a tree that was planted there, and there was a placard, and it is a sacred place for that particular family. And so, we looked at some alternative locations. On March 7th, I did send a memorandum to the board, kind of highlighting the conversation that we did have. We had representatives from the 9/11 memorial present to assist us in the placement of where the new monument would be. We found a spot right in front of the gazebo, which used to be an Eagle Scout project, but unfortunately, because of the inoperability of the water pump that was on that site, they decided to, to not maintain that particular area anymore. So, that seems to be the most appropriate site for that, that, that project. Also, we're going to look at making some enhancements in landscaping, and then bringing forward some other conceptual design staff has talked about, to really spruce up that area. We do know that there is a deadline, they have to have that pit constructed by the end of April. So, we have communicated to planning, building, as well as Parks and Recreation, that we would like to move forward and expedite anything we can to allow for the Rotary Club to effectively construct that facility on that property. Now, we are going to get into a, an agreement for perpetual care and maintenance and upkeep, because that will be the responsibility of the Rotary. But I have to thank Commissioner Hodges for being there and being part of the meeting, but it was a very productive meeting. Everyone had consensus that that was the most appropriate site. It allows for a gathering place if we did want to host events. So, I do have more information and more details in that memorandum, but that, it was a successful meeting, and we look forward to bringing forward both the agreement with the Rotary, and then taking it through the building process and the permitting process to get that constructed before their grant expires.
That's great. I'm glad that we found a place that's going to be a very good addition, very good.
The other update that we did provide later on this afternoon is concerning the John's Pass Seafood Festival. I did put out a memorandum. Our director, Walt Pierce, has some additional information. If it is the pleasure of the board to provide just a brief update concerning the lost revenue associated with that event and the revenue that is collected. If it's the pleasure of the board, he can provide a, a quick update on that item.
Fine with me.
Was, is there any questions to the memo that was sent out by the?
I would just like you to go through and explain the whole thing, Walt, if you don't mind, please.
Um, as the city manager indicated, we, we collected a total of $4,005.26 from the festival, the, the, which is a breakdown of the application, EMT, sanitation, sanit, part of sanitation staff, trash, sanitation, and, and that's about it, and tipping fees. The, also indicated in this memorandum is the parking revenue that was waived, which is nine, which is an estimated calculation, $19,007.38. It, it's almost the same number that was waived the previous year as well.
So, that's a loss, then? Okay, loss revenue.
Um, it, what, it has been indicated that there were other ancillary fees, costs, that, that were, that transpired, but I wasn't available, I, I didn't have no knowledge of those, and keeping track of those.
And Madam Mayor, to, to dovetail on the finance director's remarks, one of the things that we are going to be asking to be incorporated in subsequent agreements with any agency, in fact, that we do waive fees or make concessions or partner with, is having financial performas that are presented to the board or treasury reports, so we can see effectively what the impact is fiscally to the community, but also, you know, if there is, there's revenue enhancement opportunities or opportunities for other participation on the city's side, so really seeing what the financial impact is. Because that $19,000, that is something that, in most cases, is a budgeted revenue stream, and if that is not collected, then it provides an adverse impact. So, that kind of goes into the conversation that we'd like to have on parking, and if there is certain concessions that we would like to make, what are the, the concessions that we're willing to make, and what is the board's pleasure on that? And bring back also the special events ordinance that was discussed but was never ratified by this board. So, that's one of the things that we'd like to bring back for future discussion here, especially before we move forward with the budget process, the fee ordinance, the parking ordinance, as well as the special events ordinance, because those have financial implications if they are adopted.
If, if I'm correct, Walt, we don't know some of the, the costs that we incurred, am I correct? Such as, like Dave said, they used our electric and didn't use generators, and we have no idea what that cost the city. Is that correct?
My department wasn't keeping track of any of that.
Right, so we don't have any idea how much money we lost or something like that?
No, some of that is just a, just a mystery, so.
How, how do we correct that in the future?
Madam Mayor, if I may, certainly, in the future, what I would recommend is that we ask for itemized information or details as it relates to what they're asking for from the city, but that financial performer is something But that financial performa is something that I think is very valuable, especially at least in the first year, so we can see. But if you enter into those agreements and an agency says that we want X, Y, and Z, it's our job as the city to comply with that agreement. Any other ancillary request outside of that agreement would be at whatever cost that we have established in the fee ordinance for that particular request. So it really is for us to sit down and get our hands wrapped around the, the full brevity of everything that we've got going on, because obviously, having experience in the event business, there's things that are asked for at the last minute, and us as staff, we want to make sure we comply with that. But even in the contract that we are going to be bringing forward to the board to consider for Old Salt's is the actual hard cost. And so that language allows for us that any costs that are incurred by the city that are hard costs, that they are to pay the city for those services. So we're looking to structure better agreements and allow for more fiscal and financial disclosure so the board as well as staff has a better understanding of exactly what is needed for the event in order to make it successful and also make sure that we protect our financial interests as an, as an agency.
And just like the Old Salt's, where they're going to pay the hard costs. I'm sure the Seafood Festival Committee would want to pay the hard cost to the city, but what we need to find out, or what I would like to find out, is where do we go to find out what a person spends in the city when they come down? We had 250,000 people come through the city of Madeira Beach to the seafood festival. That's 250,000 people that have come to here to, to see Madeira Beach. So there has to be some economic impact there, and I don't know how to equate that. I, I need to find somebody at the Florida League of Cities, or, or maybe Mr. Evans can, can guide me in a, in a way where I can find more numbers, because hard costs are hard costs, but they're, they're paid for by the seafood people and the, the Old Salt's. They will pay the hard cost. But there's a lot of goodwill, and I know I use that word a lot, but there's a lot of goodwill that comes to the city when 250,000 people come through on a, on a weekend. There's people that come down here, they plan their vacation around the seafood festival. We've been doing this a long time. So I just, I want to, I want a fair shake for the city. But I need to know how much those, you know, you, you hear these numbers when Tampa Bay has the Super Bowl. It's what, $20 million financial impact? Where do they get that? Who, who came up with that $20 million? Somebody did. So I need that same company, whether it's going to cost us some money to get that or not. I, I think we need to, we need to compare apples to apples, because I know when we had the, the World Series here, it was, it was huge. We, I, we set up here as a commission, and we changed the way that the shops display their shirts. If we get the World Series, they can go outside on the sidewalk. I mean, that's simply for the World Series. It's a huge impact. And the seafood festival, and the Old Salt's, and, and, and a lot of things that happen in the city are the same way. They have an impact, and I just don't know how to equate that or find that number. But I'm going to get it, and I'm, and I'll, and I'll get it to you, what, what that's going to be.
And Madam Mayor, that, that is a, a good point, and we did mention that to Old Salt's, is that there are, there are other major indicators to identify the impact that occurs, not just the financial side and the fiscal side that the city receives, but also what the Tourism Bureau is looking for as it relates to heads and beds and bed tax, and we experienced some of that. So it's going to be all-inclusive. You're going to see the amount of folks that participate in the event, the amount of hotel rooms that were booked, the amount of, you know, activity that occurred at some of our local restaurants and those types of things. So it's going to be a holistic approach, and I think you have to look at, at a holistic approach to be, to really be able to make a determination if this is a great event for the city, because there's some things that the exposure in itself nationally, internationally, ends up paying for, you know, itself as people come to Tor, to visit our community year round. So it, it is going to be something that we're going to be looking at articulating the entire picture to the board once we get that data and information.
Any more on that subject?
That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And last, City Clerk, do you have any reports or correspondence?
Yes, I do. Today, Anthony Rondalino from the Sixth Judicial Circuit Court of Florida, he set the recall election date to Tuesday, April 17, 2018.
Anything else? I'm sorry, public comment is over. Meeting is adjourned at 7:15.